Mr. Hazen. Mr. Obbin.
Here.
Mr. Endy.
Here.
And Mr. Smith.
Here.
And you.
And Mrs. Russell is here.
I don't believe we have any minutes to approve. Do we?
Mm-hmm.
Anybody make them up into approve?
Endy, a second.
A second.
Approved as written?
Yes.
Mr. Dorance?
Yes.
Mr. Obbin?
Yes.
Mr. Endy?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
And Mrs. Russell?
Okay. Appeal 2204. And you want to go over this one, Jeff?
Absolutely. Same as last my hearing, just planning to put up storage units on 22B. The site plan is in there.
Basically, I see an empty application in front of me that says, "Looking for a special permit", but I don't see anything worded anywhere saying why or anything.
Should be a use variance.
No, you don't want a use variance.
A special permit, sorry.
Yeah, and I see nothing in the application that describes why we should be talking about a special. I don't see anything in here that talks about it being similar to other uses. It's just a blank set of stuff, so having a blank application, I'm looking for information on that.
This was a question that was brought up to me in my office, and the reason that it's in front of you right now is if you look in our codes currently, it says, "As per the zoning board of appeals".
I understand.
Special permit. So if it's something that you do not need, that's fine.
No, no, you definitely, it's not a permitted app. And somebody's coming in front of us asking for something, but not telling us why we should give it. They're giving us a blank application.
I thought the only changes you needed was for variance according to that paperwork. You're not asking for...
He's asking for us to interpret this as a non-listed commercial or industrial use similar in character to the... I assume he's asking that. It doesn't say that anywhere in the application. It doesn't say anything in the application. I'm assuming, and I should not be assuming. I should be told what I'm looking at, that this is a non-listed, and he's looking for it to be deemed similar to others so that we would grant that this falls under a special use permit. But I don't see anything that discusses what we're looking for or why it's similar to things that are allowed. I see a blank application. Now, we can make a lot of assumptions and go forward, but I don't see any of that in the applicant, in why he's in front of the zoning board. We're not here to guess. We're here to listen to appeals and go on those. So I'm assuming that he's appealing, he has to be, assuming he's appealing that it's not allowed use, and he wants us to... But those are assumptions. It's not in the application anywhere.
So what you're talking about is like Section 5 down through?
About everything.
I believe the chart, the chart is listed on there as the reason that he's here.
Not in... Okay, Section 520 permitted use chart is listed on there.
I'm trying to figure out, is there a form or a document he should be using?
I think what Frank is saying is, so under the ordinance under Section 520, there's this provision that said, "Under the HC zone, where I think this property is located, that non-listed commercial or industrial uses similar in character to those allowed in the zone as determined by the zoning board of appeals can only, would only need a special use permit as compared to a use variance."
Right.
However, the application doesn't say that and/or doesn't say, "Well, these are the uses I think it's similar to in character", so I think I'm asking the board then to determine that this only requires a special use permit as compared to a use variance.
Okay, understood.
It's like a wild ballad. In what you're saying, correct, but he also in previous, I think, outlined that when he was, when he was going for a use, when he was going for a use variance. So I don't, you know, I understand that's what we need.
I'm looking at, I'm looking at what we're being, the previous app, the previous app doesn't apply. We're being asked for this because the previous app asked for a use permit, a use variance, and didn't have...
The reason I'm asking Frank is because I, I mean, I hang on to everything, so I have the old application home I can run, get it, and then you could actually see everything that was in that.
But I'm just saying...
And then you actually know where the property is located at. I mean, I mean, you had a board member, you had a board member knocking on my neighbor's door telling them to show up and protest my storage units. Hit him right there. You knocked on Wayne's door. He came running over to my house right after and said you were telling him to show up to the meeting and protest my storage units. Did you or did you not do that?
I absolutely did not.
So if I have a signed affidavit from him, you're going to disagree with that?
Do you like me to respond to that? You understand?
I'm just telling you what I've been told.
Well, I was new to this, so I went to...
So you did knock on the door?
Absolutely. I'm saying I knocked on the door. I went to the address to view the site. The address that was listed on the site was...
My personal address was listed... If I had actually read through it, it would have said what the actual...
You may have been right on something, but having the wrong address, and your personal address was the wrong address for the request on the original application.
There's no actual property address.
Then the parcel number would have been the...
Which was on the application.
Right, but the parcel...
I've seen it. It was on the application. My parcel number was on the application.
So let's say somebody wanted to go and view your site, and they looked at that. They would go to that address, which is what...
Your job isn't mine. If you had read through it, you would have saw that. You would have saw the parcel number, then you would have done research and saw where the actual pole site was.
No, no, no.
Why would I look at an address that's...
Because it's your job. If you're sitting on a board, it's not...
And match it to a parcel number?
Okay, fine. At this point, if that's our job, I'm of the opinion that this application doesn't ask for anything, and therefore, there's nothing for us to vote on. And when we get one that asks for something and backs it up, we will consider it.
If that's your standing?
That's how you want to play this. That's how I'm...
That is not how I want to play this.
That's how you're coming out right now.
Sir, the actual address was listed on the last application I was here, and you told me I was not zoned commercial. And then I have another gentleman on the same board knocking on my neighbor's door telling me to protest my site. I'm stating facts.
You're not stating a fact. I'd like to address this. What I said was, if this is the property, it doesn't have a sign up expressing that it's that big orange sign saying, "This is where a proposed site is".
It did, on 22B. I have a picture of it.
On the wrong address.
No, no, that was my mail address. That does not have an address because it's not a 911 address. You have to have a foundation in order to get an actual physical address.
Do you want me to speak, or are you done?
Well, I'm just correcting them. I apologize if it comes out as I'm arrogant, but...
I'm trying to enlighten you as to what happened.
Enlighten me?
All right, if you don't want to do that, stop.
So, I mean, I'm looking at Mr. Ashland's original application that he submitted back when he did apply for a use variance. And what he's referring to, Mr. Ashland, is this one had location of property. It didn't have any number. Now, you're right. It had your tax map ID number up here.
Thank you.
And you had your home address here.
But it didn't have it on the location of property.
But it didn't really, and I get it, that a vacant piece of property does not have a 911 address.
It can.
No. I mean, maybe some details should have been in there, but be that as it is.
But the town did go out and stake the property.
Okay.
And my contention is, if you're on the board and you're going to vote on something, you should probably know what you're voting on.
Well, you, and you did attach like a tax map to your application, this application, which kind of showed at least somewhat where the property is located.
And there was a site plan.
And there was that site plan, correct. So what, what Mr. Dorance is saying is that though, in this new application you submit, we're, we're trying to read between the lines to some extent because it really isn't any details in it other than it says that you've, it says, just referred to Section 520 permitted use chart. A special permit, but it doesn't, I mean, there really is no other information. You did complete seeker, which you probably, maybe you've done that before. Just so you know, because this is going to require a site plan from the planning board, we don't do seeker. The planning board does it because under the ordinance, it says, for site plan review projects, they do seeker. So just so you know. And again, Mr. Ashland attached a copy of his deed, a copy of, let's see, a statement of sale when you bought it.
Yes, sir.
An assessment sheet and, and Kelsey, looks like you probably attached the county planning board decision, or maybe you did too. I don't know. But, so what we're asking for is, I guess, some additional information for you as to why you're asking the board to, to consider a special use permit for this project as compared to a use variance. What, so under the, the permitted use chart, what, what on that chart do you feel that what you're requesting is similar in character to? Do you follow what I'm saying?
There, there's a list of probably 30 different types of businesses that are allowed. There are banks, taverns, houses, apartment complexes, garages, repair shops, all of which are, no offense to some repair shops, but add less character to the community than what an actual landscaper, which is what I do, would put into having actual storage units. Right next to my property is an auction barn. Across from that is a bottle redemption. Up the road is Apple Valley Hydraulics. Right up the road from them is Ormsby's Trucking, which trucks it right next to the road. And no offense to any of that stuff. The characteristics of my storage units would be way beyond the characteristics of that. They, this board has approved storage units before. They've approved the storage units up in Woods Mills. They've approved storage units in another location. I wrapped up, I cannot recall it. It is not an uncommon thing for this board to approve storage units. But again...
I get your point.
And what you're describing is good because this is somewhat the information that, that we need for the application, okay? So what you're explaining to us is kind of what we needed. You know what I'm saying? Because, because in the application, I mean, you attach a bunch of stuff, but really no, none of this comparison stuff, which is what's needed for this board to say, "Okay, you don't need a use variance. You only need a special use permit", and then we can move forward with reviewing the requirements for special use permit.
I apologize. Probably a little bit ignorant on my part, but I did come before the ZB board. I don't know, was it three, four weeks ago? And a lot of that stuff was actually in that application, which I believe Mr. Obbin has my last application sent to him, which is...
And so, and that was asking for a use variance, and that's not, and it's not attached to this application.
What your attorney is saying, a lot of that stuff that you're asking for tonight was in my last application.
But you were asking for something different. It's not in this application. It's not attached to this application. It's not there, and there's no, and there's no request for us to...
And I get it. I just said, I understand that. What I'm saying is by the fact that you guys reviewed my last application, at least I hope you did, I, I thought honestly that you would have recalled some of that and would have been able to make a decision tonight. I think, I think, I mean, I understand some of the paper we're dismissing from tonight. Well, honestly, obviously, I do recall it. However, like Mr. Smith pointed out, without it in, on paper, it's, it's like...
A wild ballad.
Yeah, yeah. And I, I'm not saying I disagree with you, but I'm saying that unless we have it on actual, written down where we can make the decision on it, then we're kind of at a loss.
I can, Ronald, make six copies real quick and add that to this application. Take me five minutes.
Well, that would be up to the pair. I, I don't know how that would exactly work, but that would be...
I got a copy machine. All the stuff I have, my applications that have the house. I can add that to this application. I can make six copies super fast.
That's, we still need a request to do something that wasn't in, you're asking for something different. Oh, no, you're phrasing. You checked the box. It says, "Special use permit under zoning, under the zoning ordinance", is the appeal. But...
Right. Well, he's, but he's...
I know what he's saying. I understand.
He's, but he's also present, and he, both of them, he's not here to articulate it, but he is here, present before you and articulating what he's asking us to do. I mean, there's, there's the list that you mentioned, and probably this list right here.
Yes, thank you, sir.
Which was, which was attached to your use variance application, so it's, it's available. It talks more about comparing it to, for the use variance purposes, but you identify them. And again, you know, the ordinance is the ordinance, and it's a matter of the public record what's identified there. So that's why I'm just asking you those questions, so you can...
Nope, that's fine. I'm open to any question back and answer.
Kind of like explain to us, you know, and, and you've done that to some extent, but you're explaining to us what you're asking us for to do. Consider it as a special use permit as compared to a use variance because of the other uses that are there, and what you want, what you're proposing is similar to some of those other uses, and/or maybe better or more attractive or more palatable than some of the uses that are permitted uses in that zone.
Yes, sir.
Correct?
And what I'm, okay, so I'm like, I'm looking for the description, right, as to what we're being... The only place we can play with this is under "Non-listed Commercial or Industrial Use Similar in Character to Those Allowed in the Zone as Determined by the Board of Appeals". And I'm not going to disagree with you that a lot of the allowed stuff is much more impactful. I'm just saying, which one is it similar to? Pick one.
I'm sorry, I don't have the site ma, or the HC zone in front of me currently, and the list of actual, the businesses that are in the HC zone to...
I appreciate that. Thank you.
I mean, you have residential accessory structures. I mean, that's similar in characteristics. I mean, you have public and semi-public buildings and grounds. That's a semi-public building because they actually rent it. It's open to the public, any public that wants to actually pay money to rent a storage unit. It's similar in characteristics to that as well. Personal service business, it's, I'm offering a service. It is personally, I own it, and I'm personally offering a service.
May I make a couple comments?
When he's through, certainly.
I think part of the problem, and probably Mr. Renee would be the best one to take a look at this one. If you look at the application that is out there now, reasons for appeal, there's three basic reasons under five. First one is interpretation of zoning ordinance is requested because, and that is one of the separate interpretations on the front page. Under B is variance for use variance, which is a separate. And then under C is for area variance. He's not requested any of those.
Yeah, it would be A.
No.
Okay.
Not according to the front page. Interpretation is a completely separate request than a special use.
Well, he's checked, the, the bracketed area next to a special permit on the zoning ordinance is checked. So that's what he's asking for.
Right. And in the, in our code book, it says it has to be determined by you. It doesn't give anything in here for what you're looking for, but if you look at the seeker that he has presented, he's got storage units to be placed on the map, such and such, location, and what it is. The application would not give him any place to put in what he is requesting as a special permit.
Or any place for us to have any information to determine to issue that special permit?
Other than the additional documentation that he submitted with the seeker and everything else. He's got the information on there for storage units and everything.
And...
Which is part of the application process.
It's part of it, but Howard, it still doesn't, he started to do that verbally. It doesn't... But the request would be, you know, to tell us what it's similar to in, when his request...
There is no place on the application, the first half of the page, just for him to do that.
Well, then I guess we can't consider it period or whatever. I mean, it's because we don't get the information to make a decision with, unless we get it some other way.
I think, I think that's what he's trying to do.
Yeah, that's what he's trying to do now.
But as Howard said, there's no word on the application for me to do that. And so you're asking, you mean for something in the paper?
Uh, yeah, and you supply stuff that's not on the app in other places. Your longer lists and other things. You know, you supplied additional information to justify what you were asking for before. It, it's not a restrictive list of what you supply. It has to be only things on the application. If you have, so...
And I think the, the board should sit down and come up with a new application because this is not according to the front page.
That's entirely possible, that this application may not cover all things. I mean, it's no place, I don't believe, where it, you know, we don't have a space for the sign variance either in the application.
There is. We're on 5B.
And it's ordinance request reasons. See interpretations of use within the zoning. You see sign in there?
Yeah, and that's in parentheses.
For use variance for, okay, for a sign. Okay, I got it.
No, there's not.
That's what I was asking earlier. There is no.
And that's why I stated that the code book states as for your determination.
That's what I was wondering.
Howard, and or Mr. Ashline, have you applied, applied for site plan approval for the planning board yet? Or no, just waiting to get this first and then that next?
Waiting to tackle this first.
And then the next. Okay, and it's fine. That makes sense.
Yep, that's how, that'd be the right sequence. They just send you back to us to say...
Nope, it is. I just out of curiosity, I don't know if you have it or not. And not that it's, and not that it's important to us, but I mean, looking at your site plan, I mean, it's, well, it is important to us, but it's probably more of a site plan issue with the planning board. But are you planning any kind of screening or anything around, I mean, like...
As a measure of when I applied last time, I'm leaving the tree line right there just to kind of block the storage units from the main roadway.
Okay. How about, are you like going to have a sign or anything like that?
Small sign issue. Right there, being right by the road, there's really no need to advertise.
And you're allowed, you're allowed a certain size sign anyways.
No, I understand that, but...
Crushed on.
Crushed on is in the application previously. That was her embryo, I'd ask.
Two-story, one-story.
I'm sorry?
Two-story, one-story.
Storage buildings?
Yeah.
One-story, please.
One-story.
Any lighting on them?
Just minimal LED down facing lighting.
Any units heated?
No.
Is there any, I mean, because you're on 22B, you're going to have to get like a curb cut or something with DOT, I'm guessing, right, to...
I don't think there's a curb.
Or even a curb cut, but you're going to have to be some kind of...
They have such an easement right there. They have, the actual, the DOT actually has quite the easement to where I have to be so far back anyways to where I don't think that would be applicable.
Right, and, and you, so if you're keeping the tree line, is there going to be any issue with site distance coming one way or the other way? I'm assuming coming from...
There's still quite, quite a distance where you can see left or right in a timely fashion to make it out.
Okay, because obviously that'd be a concern. You might be able to see if people are trying to get out so they can see both ways.
Which is one of the things I looked at when I purchased it as well.
What are the setback requirements on commercial stuff? This is not served by public water there. I'm guessing so. Commercial... Yeah, you may have, on one side, you're going to be okay. The other side, you may have an issue there. It looks like, because it looks like under commercial use, we're going to call it commercial, not industrial. Looks like you have to have a side yard setback of 30 feet, rear of 30, front of 50.
So we're short in all dimensions on this. I have the 30 on the size, and I believe that the easement that the DOT has covers the front as well. I believe my survey took that into account when you drew up the site plan.
So the dotted lines around this are not your actual parcel?
No.
It's not the property line?
It's not the property line.
I'm, I'm going to see what you're looking at, so I can...
I'm looking at the quit you supplied. Your map.
Yep, that is my property line right there, and the 3.3 setback. And from the story, corner of the storage units is right there, and that's the center of 22B right there.
But the issue is, you got to have, you got to have 50 feet here.
And your 43.
And your 43.
I can always knock out.
And you got to have 30 feet on the one side that you're 26.3.
I don't have problems knocking out one, two on the right and one on the left if you're looking at from your direction.
And I think you have to have 30 feet in the back.
Here, you might, you might be okay, but it's hard to tell.
Right.
I mean, but here's, because that's closer. But yeah, you get 26 here, you have that 30.
But I believe they have an easement from here to my actual corner.
When you're putting it, you put it to your property line, not from, setback from property line, not from...
Property line to...
Not from road, not from center line. It's property, it's property line. And then here you have 20, and it looks like you have to have 30 in the rear too according to quit this.
Okay. And again, I have no problem knocking out.
Let me ask this, Howard.
530.
So that property is not served by public water, correct? Okay, so that's, if it's served by public water, setbacks can be less, but not served is what I've been reading to you. So I just want to verify that.
Okay.
The water main does go up on the opposite side of 22B, so would that be served or not?
I believe when I bought it, the deed said that public utilities of water and electric were available.
So it would be served.
Could he tie into water? I mean, he's, you got to go under the road, but...
I could tie into water, because that was one of the things that I didn't notice. I could tie into water and electric.
Yeah, water served by...
We're going to have...
So it is served.
It is served.
Okay, so that changes the setback.
The water main goes up to the bottom of...
So that changes the setbacks.
Yeah, then setbacks are okay then.
Yep.
If it's served by public water, then your setbacks are okay.
Okay. The planning board can determine that.
Well, actually, it's, well, this week, Howard determines that, and then if you don't meet setbacks, then you guys...
Right.
But they could do it as part of the site.
Site plan review.
Correct.
So sorry to digress into another...
No, that's fine.
They'll be looking at setbacks and visual screening and things like that in site plan review.
Right.
Right.
So depending on how this board wants to, I guess, act on this application, if you chose to wanting to proceed with it this evening, I think the first...
to wanting to proceed with it this evening, I think the first step would be somebody making a motion that, um, Mr. Ashline has identified some uses that are similar in character in this zone, albeit by his testimony tonight. Um, and therefore, um, the board can treat this as a special permitted use application as compared to a used grants application. And then secondly, you then vote on that application, if you know what I'm saying. I think it's a two-prong thing, process that you have to employ to get there. But yeah, you have to make a motion and vote on it, basically.
Well, he has to, you have to basically say, okay, we believe that there are similar uses in character in this HC zone that we can now allow, we can treat this as a special use permit application.
That's basically the whole thing. Once we.
Well, then, but then you have to vote on, to approve the special use.
No, special use permits are approved by planning. In the, here.
Okay. All right, that's right.
So we determined that it is a, it is an allowable special use.
Right, right. I forget that. Most, most towns, yeah, most towns have zoning boards that, but that's like scot of all this.
Yeah, so we, we approve, we say that it is an allowable special use and then the planning board takes the special use permit and does the site plan review and the other pieces.
Correct, you're right.
Now, I think we may be able to, we may be able to determine that. I don't know if we're prohibited from determining that it's allowed.
I don't, I don't see, I mean, irregardless of this situation where this permit doesn't cover our special use permit requirements, what it, what it's asking for, what, what he needs to provide. Um, I mean, obviously common sense wise, we can say, yes, we need to know what you're doing, but like the variance has its specific requirements listed right
Oh, you're talking about the core criteria?
Yeah.
But I don't have.
Right, there.
I see what you're saying.
We don't have anything.
Because, because all you can really determine if you're gonna, if you're gonna consider it as a special use permit is whether or not he's demonstrated that there are uses or non-listed commercial or, um, that this is a use that's similar in character to those allowed in that zone and therefore, and therefore.
Correct, yes.
It can be treated as special use.
Are we gonna use his?
We can use his verbal testimony.
This is verbal testimony.
You can, yes.
We can use.
Yes, yeah.
We just tend to.
We didn't get it to begin with. We had to get it so that we had something we could look at.
Right. No, that's all, that's the point I was trying to make is what we can accept, what?
We, we can accept his verbal testimony. Say if he wasn't here tonight, then I, I agree, we don't have really anything that's adding to that.
Absolutely.
But.
But in this case, he's here.
He's here and he provided.
He's provided us information.
Information that, you know, personal service, he considers it similar to personal service, similar to, what was the other one? Uh, a, uh, public, semi-public buildings and grounds. I'm not sure if there's a definition of that in ours, that's such a, but, um. And I don't see the accessory building or chunks listed as a use.
It says residential accessory uses up above, very C, it's the last one and the residential uses.
Last one.
Private riding single present airport.
No, I mean, up here on this.
Oh, up in the.
Residential uses, residential accessory structures like garages and things.
Oh, I don't have that on mine. The one I have, it only says residential cluster development. It doesn't, the, the one I'm looking at didn't, it doesn't include that, but that's okay.
It's whatever.
Mine's a copy that I just got. So, so that, there's a after residential cluster that says accessory?
Yep.
Okay, good. That's certainly.
I mean, there's no question, there's a long list of other things that are on here that has Mr. Ashline's mentioned and some of the board members have mentioned are.
Much more impactful.
Correct.
Right. Yes. Just have to have something to meet the, the boarding that says it's similar to something or, or whatever. Cause that's really what we have to decide on is, is this, you know, is this a non-listed commercial or industrial use similar in character to those allowed in the zone? And if we determine that it is, then it's good for a special use permit.
Let's just say, for example, cause on that list there's also the, it's called retail use. And the definition of that is the offering for a fee of goods or merchandise to the general public. Somewhat similar, I guess?
Somewhat similar. Yeah.
Somewhat, somewhat.
It's somewhat similar. It's not, but if it was exactly that, then we wouldn't need it. I mean, so that's, you know, he's offering not merchandise, but use of something, but so that's somewhat similar. Like I said, if it was the exact match, it'd be a retail, it'd be an allowed piece.
If he wanted to sell the lock for the storage units for a monthly fee, then he's offering the merchandise. But, and I imagine, I don't know if you're gonna be like most storage places and have the little office that has the, all of that stuff for, available for not. Some do, some don't, that's.
I might. That's still.
It's allowed.
It's off the way costs and stuff like, everything's going automated nowadays, so.
Okay. Yeah, I just, last time, I haven't been in one for a long time, but last time I was in the big one downtown and they had a whole. A whole rack of add-on stuff that they could sell you.
Locks and.
Locks and wraps.
Vending machine.
Vending machine. Yeah.
Vending machine for locks.
Okay. I'll make a motion that we consider parcel in application two thousand twenty-two dash oh oh four. For the use, the part, for the, which, that parcel is in an HC zone and that storage units in an HC zone are a similar in character use or similar, yeah, similar in character to those allowed in the zone, in particular retail use and accessory buildings.
Do you need a second?
One second. Now, do we do discussion or we vote? Which is the order?
If somebody.
If any discussion on that or lots or anything.
If not, then we can vote.
Then let's move to vote.
Did you vote? Your motion in a, in a second.
Mr. Lawrence?
Yes.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mr.undy?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
And Mrs. Russell?
Yes.
Okay. Site plan review in front of the planning board and a special use permit application to the planning board. And you're done with us because we say it's something that can be special use permitted and the planning board takes special use permits all the way through to the end unless you run into a setback or something and you need to come back for a variance on those things in your plan.
Yeah, okay. So the one thing I would, I would probably ask you to take a look at if you have a copy of the ordinance at home, so in the, in the ordinance, there is a, there's a section dealing with special use permits and, and or things that, special use regulations, meaning what the planning board should be looking at. I'd raise something up dealing with each one of those things. There's not a lot of things, but there's things in there. I would just touch on all those. Just make sure your site plan, you know, indicate like the screening signage, that you put something in there dealing with all of those kinds.
Historically, historically, they care about light pollution, they care about visibility, they care about access to the roads and safety, getting in and out of them. All of those things come up.
That might have crossed my D's.
Well, and, and just that it's, they care, you know, now you're looking at the site plan and how, and making sure that it fits the, the pieces they're looking for. So, but you're good to go. You, 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 what you want to do is interpret it as something that can be done with a special use permit in that zone.
I appreciate that. Okay, you're good?
Your mailing address is on the application?
Yes.
Okay, I'll mail you a copy of the decision document.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
Yep.
And then just get together, get together Mr. Newman to fill out the application for the planning board, site plan and all that stuff.
Okay, I appreciate that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Will you be in office tomorrow?
Uh, after ten thirty, I'll be doing switching.
Okay, I'll see you then. I appreciate you guys. Have a good evening.
You too.
What's next on the agenda? I don't know of any old business at this point. Does anybody? I mean, we're still waiting for Mr. Gerkey to set his piece that he says he'll do.
Yeah, I, I really haven't really talked to Howard. I've talked to Howard about a couple of other things in the last, like actually today, cause we had emails, we've missed each other for the last week and a couple of things going on. But, um, I haven't really talked to Howard at all about Mr. Gerkey, even though you're probably familiar somewhat if you've seen that. So what I'll do is I'll, I'll get ahold of Howard, we can talk about it and, and or I can follow up with his attorney and see what's going on.
I mean, last he'd said he was going to do something and that he was under contract to do something, but.
Yeah, so I will, I'll follow up on that.
That was the only, that was our never-ending old business.
Correct, correct.
Anything new?
Uh, sorry, the old business, is there anything that we can do to help the process along about getting better maps and things like that? Like, is that something?
Well, Howard said you were, you told me you were working on getting us an improved set of maps.
I showed Kelsey earlier, I do have a set, I'm just waiting to get them laminated. So when we put them up, they don't get all.
Okay, now.
I will have them in my office, but we can bring them.
But can we also get copies to the board members?
Not that size, cause they are big and.
They're D-size.
They're thirty, thirty-five dollars a piece.
Okay.
So even if we can get smaller ones, Howard, so the board can get them.
If you can get C-size.
Just the board, but people.
And if we have to, and if, and if thirty-five bucks a piece, I'll take it out of my budget to go ahead and run big ones, but I don't, we don't need D-size. We can live with.
I got these, so we can have them reference in my office or bring them in here.
Right, I understand, but we still need something better than what we have for the board members.
That I am going to keep working on.
Whoever, whoever printed the big one for you, see if they have the ability to print a little. You went to somebody to have them print, right?
The ones I had were made up by the county.
Right.
County planning board.
So.
And they're, they're different than the white ones that are on the wall.
Right. Can we ask the county planning board to produce one similar to what you just got, but get it in the smaller?
Legal size?
It's, yeah, C-size, little, I can't remember ABC, but.
Twenty-two, twenty-two by eighteen.
That size. If they can make one, we can get them copied.
Okay. I will check for them tomorrow.
Maybe one full-size extra one I have in this room as well as your office.
Well, this room gets multi-use, so we'll bring it in.
But that's what you're saying, he's gonna have one that'll be kind of mobile, so we can bring it in here, so we can, during meetings, whatever, we can, can have a look at it.
Well, cause that, that was part of the first question is.
Well, well, and that's what's, and that, that particular piece on that HC almost looks like a river. It balls out. It, it doesn't, it's not a nice clean line. It's got this bulbous look, so having a blow up, it's.
Howard showed it to me on his map and obviously when you look at it.
Right, but when we were looking at this micro map, that's why I'm saying if we had something two or three times that size, we would not.
I'm very willing to give you my white one out of there, bring it down here, so it's in here all the time.
But it doesn't need to be, well, it's up to you. Yeah, we could, we, if, if it's okay with whoever uses this room, we could certainly put it up. I mean, that would be just fine.
Is it attractive enough that we place one of the pictures on the wall?
Or add a new picture.
There'd be plenty of room to put it up there, no matter what, somewhere.
Okay.
Put a split unit. Put a little handprint beside it.
Before the, the meeting closes, I do have one request and I've already talked to Kelsey, so she knows exactly what I'm talking about. We were both on the same page about it. I request that during either one of your meetings, either you come right out for the whole year and state that cutoff is going to be two Mondays prior to our next meeting, or if you go month by month, because if your meeting changes.
Don't forget that it's a ten-day re. It republished right now is ten-day.
Polish, right. Yeah, yeah, I know, but what he, what Howard's talking about is you set a deadline, cause a lot of towns will have that saying, okay, you have until this date.
Twenty-seventh.
Yeah, to get us information to be on next month's agenda. Cause too many times people just walk in.
Willy-nilly.
A few days before and say, well, we want to be on the agenda or a few days before may not be right, because then it can't be advertised either. But say like a week before, it'll still be advertised, but that doesn't give it, you know, the.
Enough time.
You know, Howard or Kelsey enough time really to digest it all?
So right now we have a, I mean, we have a requirement of it being in ten days before our meeting day.
That is your required posting time for, uh, for the paper.
Right.
Ten days.
Yeah, so we need, but he.
No more than ten, no less than five.
Okay.
It's weird.
What Howard is saying is that let's, maybe we should set some kind of deadline where they'd have to, somebody could submit paperwork, whether it's, I think we need longer than ten days. So it's two weeks or whatever. Um, some boards, I mean, like say for example, Town of Plaster, you have to submit stuff to be on next month's agenda in April. Tomorrow's the deadline for that. So it's almost like a month in advance of the meeting you, you have to have stuff in. Um, maybe that's, maybe that's too much, but at some point I think having a deadline makes some sense.
Yeah, well, we've never, up till now in the last fifteen to twenty years, we haven't, we've had a deadline for it to be to us, I.D. Kelsey. We have not set the deadline that, the, beyond that. It's whatever the zoning enforcement officer needed to process be on top of that.
Right, but I think, but I think, but I think having some deadline, whether it's fourteen days before the meeting or whatever everybody thinks is appropriate, that we have that kind of deadline.
And so what are we saying with that? Is it just into Howard by then or is it into us by then?
Howard, everything goes to Howard first regardless.
But we have to have it out of Howard's, this one was late, this one wouldn't have made it. This one shouldn't have gone.
Okay.
But, but, but.
They asked to go.
But we need it ten, we need it, we need, Kelsey needs it ten days before the meeting day, period. If Howard doesn't get it there by ten days, it's not on the agenda for that month. Now, if we'd like this board to say, and we'd like to pick arbitrarily for Howard that he has to have it seven days before that, we can do that, but that's really what he wants. It's not, we have to have it ten days before.
Right, but, but ultimately I think whether it's, we still have to decide that too. With, cause Howard just doesn't unilaterally decide that himself.
Well, he, well, he has to decide what he can do, what he can't do.
Right, well, but yeah, but that's right, but he tells us and then we say, okay, this is gonna be the deadline.
How much, be in ten days before, how much in front of that do you need it to be, everything submitted to you? And if you need two weeks, it's two weeks, I mean.
Just copy Plaster, you'll be done with it.
Yeah. I would like to see the, like Kelsey says, the two weeks before the Monday.
So the, so the first Monday of the month?
If it falls, yeah, if it falls on a Friday, that's a deadline, the next two days are gonna be hard to get anything done. And if you need it within ten days, but the, the Friday is fourteen days ahead, we're not gonna make it. But if we have it two weeks, the Monday before the first, would you say the first?
The first Monday of the month is usually when I'm like, all right, if we don't have anything, I gotta figure this out this week or else we're past our deadline.
So you need it a week or two before that, so you can have it out in time for her.
Well, if I don't have anything in my office by that point, all I gotta do is tell Kelsey there's nothing.
I understand, but if you get, but if you got something on that day, then.
You gotta call me and say, it's here.
It's here, we'll have it in.
We'll have it.
And that will be priorities, get that done.
That still doesn't get.
But if it doesn't match what's gonna be done anyhow, it's not gonna go on that month's agenda till it's cut up, so.
Right, cause you have to make the determination whether it's a complete application or not.
Right.
That's something you decide whether it's complete. If it's complete, that's fine. If it's not complete, you tell the guy, well, I need more information. It's not complete. I'm not gonna accept this.
I don't, I mean, so do we want three weeks before our meeting, four weeks before our meetings?
Let's try it right now with what Kelsey and I talked about. We'll go with the two weeks and if we run into a problem, we'll approach the, uh, the board and get a change then.
So that's four days basically for you.
Yep.
Is that enough?
Is that enough?
Give us.
If it's a Monday, yes.
So the first Monday of the month.
First Monday of the month.
Yeah, New Plaster, I don't care. I mean, I thought, cause you might be, that might be your week off.
If it's my week off, I should have somebody from another town covering for me.
Really? Okay. Or the supervisor can. Cause since he appoints you, that's part of his, part of his misery.
Not shared services. We should have coverage on anytime I'm in town.
But we're the third Monday.
Yes, so it would be April seventeenth.
Who takes your spot if you're out of town?
Usually we get ahold of one of the other town. If it's a long time, if it's one day.
Yeah, so if we're always the third Monday.
That's why I said the first Monday of the month.
Or the first of the month.
You wanna say the first of the month?
Say the first of the month, that's always at least three weeks, right? Three, four Three, four weeks.
So, okay.
So by the first of the month.
So by April 1st.
So I'll ma, I'll make a motion that for appeals to be considered by this board, they need to be into the codes enforcement officer by the first of the month, for them to be considered on that month's
Agenda.
Agenda. And they have to be to the secretary of the board ten days before the meeting. The completed application.
Well, that's way between, that's way between the two of them, so I think if we're setting a deadline for them to submit-
We already have the ten day, I just wanna stick with it.
Yeah, and that's fine too, but the first of the month is good, I think.
First of the month, it's easy for everybody to understand, we don't have to go pub, counting days and coming up with a different calendar.
Right.
They have, they have to be in by the first of the month.
Is there some guideline as to when this will be available to the board? Because I came in on Friday and wasn't able to get it, so I was away for the weekend, so I didn't get to see this until today, which isn't fair to the townspeople, isn't fair to us.
It should be available to us.
Typically, it should be available to you the Thursday.
I'd like to see a week.
We should be available, I mean, should-
Originally we said the Thursday, I remember saying the Thursday, that's why I stuck with Thursday, but if you want the, the week prior, I would, let's go with the week prior.
The week prior.
So the second Monday of the month.
Right, which means you'll need it, you know, three, three to four days, well, you'll need three to four days.
That's another good reason why to have it in advance and get to you guys.
Right, we need at least, we want a week to go look, we want a week to go find it and look at it. Okay, but so we're making, I've made a motion that applications have to be into the codes enforcement officer by the first of the month to be considered in that month's agenda. Can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye, aye, aye. Okay, do we need anything else or we covered after that for the moment?
We're covered for the moment.
Yeah, and, and as we directed our secretary, we'd like them a week before.
Yep.
Thank you, and I would like to see everybody for one quick second after you close.
Can we, we need to add a line in here somewhere to address, to address the special permit under the zoning ordinance in the application.
Is that what you have right there?
Yes.
Do you have said line?
I've got the, what I would like to propose to you as to modification to the application.
Well, good, why don't you do that and we can vote on it, and then we can get it produced.
I will come up here, actually-
As another piece of new business.
I will go with Mr. Manane since he is legal. My suggestion is take all of these and I'll let them work straight down. Including this one moved over to E.
Okay.
And then go through, keep A, because that is the interpretation. B would be added in as a special permit and we'll come up with signage between on that and what would be a separate thing.
Some piece of paper, right?
Yeah, yeah, and then C, D and F would all be combined and-
Well, use variance is different than area variance, that's the only thing, they'd be separate.
Uh, yeah, that's why C, D and F would be combined, area-